Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the first day of Dallas's AS Synergy Annual Conference, DRC 2020. Thank you for watching our online meeting. Even though the threat from coronavirus is around the world and brings the huge impact in our life, helping patients further management of dialysis access is a non-stop mission to healthcare professionals. Therefore, this year we have a special arrangement of coronavirus session and invite the physician from each countries to share their response and experience to the dialysis access maintenance during this tough period. Please welcome the session chairman, Dr. He Bo Ren.
Hi, ladies and gentlemen, doctors, nurses, all the people, audience from all over the world, the online audience. I'm Dr. Po Jiankou from Taiwan. Dialysis Synergy X, Dialysis Synergy 2020 in Taiwan. I'm really happy to have this event possible in Taiwan this year. However, we all know that with the latest impact of the coronavirus, the situation have changed a lot about everything. Actually, our daily life have been affected a lot. Still, we have to take care of patients with their dialysis access health. That's our responsibility. Still, we want to have this event possible and do more contribution to our society. So, this year we have to convert the event into an online teleconference format. And hopefully, within the two and a half day event, still, we can get a lot from the conference. So, I have to thank in advance all of our faculties and especially our audience and all the doctors and nurses who will be willing to participate and contribute everything in our conference. Thank you.
Our first speaker in this session is Dr. Wang Yuzhu from Beijing Haidian Sector of Beijing University Third Hospital, Beijing Haidian Hospital. He will bring the topic of patient access maintenance during coronavirus. Please welcome his presentation.
尊敬的各位同道，大家好！ 特别感谢大家的邀请， 大家希望我参与， 跟大家做一些交流。这个特殊的时期， 能够利用一个特殊的形式， 向大家表示祝贺。那么同时呢，也在在这里， 何贝教授， 向你们表示问候， 我们大家对它认识不深入， 那为什么这么说呢？ 因为表现在两个方面。出现了急性的肾损伤， 第二个方面呢， 那也会出现血管通路的一些问题。那在疫情期间， 没有现成的经验。提出来跟大家做一个分享， 希望大家批评指正。手术室的环境的处理， 以及患者术前术后的安置。那么我知道每次都是， 时间都是挺仓促的。所以我尽快地讲， 不耽误大家太长的时间。那么首先啊， 那么建立通路的方式呢， 术者呢进行三级防护， 就是平常我们所说的N95。如胶手套的话是两副， 因为穿防护服， 再就是医用防水靴。所以这就是所谓的三级防护， 所以在这样的装备底下， 要完成一些复杂的手术， 确确实实是比较困难的。那虽然都是普通患者，但是呢，因为 但是不能把他当普通患者看待， 所以我们要加强我们的防护。这个流程是这样，电话预约， 术前一天电话预约， 一定要告知患者和家属。那么在术后观察三十到六十分钟以后， 可以沿专用的通道出院。最后房间进行中末消毒， 以及紫外线照射等等。这是进出病房的流程。那么在术中， 针对于不同的血管通路功能不良， 那比如说中心静脉导管不良的话， 比如说尿激酶的持续的泵入， 我们只能更换导管了。更换在原位或者异位插管， 这是中心静脉导管功能不良。对于AVF功能不良呢， 那对于AVF的狭窄， 因为PTA总的来说的话， 那这样的病人还是建议中心静脉插管。对于血栓形成的病人， 结合术者的经验确定， 那么也可以采取手术。用时比较长的病人， 度过这个疫情期。那这是AVF功能不良。对于一些AVG的狭窄， 我们建议还是暂缓手术。这个比较简单一些。手术时间也不会太长。那么当然对于一些长短的血栓， 或者手术时间比较长， 你这样的病人的话， 等疫情过去以后， 我们一些处理的一些原则。对术者的防护， 也就是加强防护， 一次性的防渗漏手术衣， 再就是呢，面屏或者是戴护目镜。对患者的防护， 一次性的工作帽，一次性的医用口罩， 这个患者的话不见得一定戴N95了。另外注意最大范围的扑进。那么这是我们在疫情期间 比如说这是我们的术者， 都是采取的二级防护。对普通患者采取的手术防护的措施。那么对于手术室的环境， 术前术后一定要严格地进行消毒。主要包括这几个方面，空气消毒， 大物件表面及地面的消毒， 然后清水擦拭。浸泡十五到三十分钟， 然后再用清水洗净晾干。这是手术环境的处理。那总原则呢，我总结了三条。能简化的尽量简化， 以缩短操作的时间， 减少交叉感染的危险。第二个原则呢，是各个透析中心 尽量减少患者的流动， 所以这一点是能做到的。第三点，一定要注意， 希望下次见到我们一醉方休。好，最后谢谢大家，谢谢。
Well, thank Professor Wang for his excellent speech during his busy time. And of course, we hope that the virus infection will be over rather soon and we proceed to the next talk. And I think all the questions from the online audience will be discussed after all the talks in this session.
The second speaker is Dr. Fan He. He Fan医师，Department of Nephrology from Wuhan Tongji Hospital, Wuhan Tongji Hospital. Since Dr. He is from the most high-risk location, he will bring us the situation from the frontline fighting against COVID-19. Please welcome his presentation. Impact of COVID-19 outbreak on dialysis access management in Wuhan.
Good afternoon, everyone. As we know, since December 2019, a severe acute respiratory infection caused by a novel coronavirus begins to spread in China. Today, I want to discuss about the impact of COVID-19 outbreak on dialysis access management in Wuhan. I'm He Fan from Tongji Hospital, Tongji Medical College, Huazhong University of Science and Technology. I will give this speech in five part. First, let's talk about the epidemiology of COVID-19. Today, more than 100 countries in the world has spread of COVID-19. Wuhan in Hubei Province is the initial areas where the epidemic break out and is the most serious effect by the epidemic. The cumulative number of infection has reached 67,000 in Hubei and 49,000 in Wuhan. Fortunately, with effort over the whole nation, the new onset cases reduced to a small number, about 10 to 30 cases every day. And the number of cure increased to more than 1,000 per day. The total remain cases is about 20,000. So, we predict the epidemic will be disappeared in about three weeks. Then, we will take about SARS-CoV-2 prevalence in Haizhong Diaries Center. Dialysis patients are a special group. They deserve more attention because during the epidemiology, they cannot be isolated at home. Dialysis patients have their and their accomplished family members must go between home and hospital regularly, two or three times a week for dialysis. And they need to stay for more than four hours in a crowded closed dialysis center. That made dialysis patients more susceptible to infection. This figure showed infection rate of 6,377 dialysis patients in 62 dialysis centers in Wuhan. We can see the confirmed infection rate in dialysis patients is 1.7% and the suspected rate is 83%. Likewise, here we can see that dialysis staff also have a high infection rate and suspected rate with 3.1% and 3.3%, respectively. Then, we will talk about the current state of dialysis vascular access in Hubei. Whether the vascular access will be affected by the epidemic? In this slides, we show the vascular access in use until March 10 in 34 dialysis centers in Hubei. We can see in some of the centers, the catheter rate is really higher than usual. Here we show the AVF rate is 77 and the catheter rate is 22%. Compared to DOCS 5 China data, the AVF rate reduced 10% and the catheter rate reduced 10%. This figure shows the extent of vascular access complication during the virus epidemic. We can see flow reduction and the infection of catheter, AVF stenosis are the most common complication. The sum rate is about 10%. Following, let's look at the treatment of VA complication during the epidemic. The total procedure done during epidemic was 351, in which 70, about 80% is non-internal catheter and 10% is internal catheter insertion. Just a few AVF construction, PTA and AVF repairment has been done during this epidemic. All the procedures were done for patients cannot receive continued dialysis. Some complications such as stenosis of AVF were not treated as usual because of epidemic. So, the protection level of procedure was different in different dialysis centers, most of which was done Class 1 or 2 level. Finally, we will discuss a strategy for resume operation. Today, with very few exceptions, we have reached the end of the epidemic. We must resume operation for dialysis patients to reduce catheter rate and further damage. Before the patient admitted into the inpatient department, the examination should be done in outpatient department to exclude SARS-CoV-2 infection. The examinations include CT scan, blood routine test, nucleic acid test. If all the tests is negative, then we can admit that the patient into the ordinary ward. We should restart operation or procedure gradually. We recommend start simple and short-time cost surgery first, such as a tourniquet insertion, insertion, AVF, and Singapore PTA. If the epidemic is not severe and there's no patient left because of epidemic, AVG or AVF reconstruction can resume too. We also should increase planned surgery and reduce emergency surgery. To do so, we need to screen all the patients with reduction of AVF or catheter flow volume. We should also make an operation list, arrange it according to the closure risk. If epidemic, we should avoid complex surgery and restrict operation time to reduce infection risk. For patient confirmed or suspect with COVID-19, we should admit the patient into a COVID-designed hospital ward. Non-internal catheter is the prior choice for vascular access complication. All the procedures should be done in a negative pressure operation room on the casual prevention. Here, I want to summarize what we discussed. The COVID-19 outbreak has much impact on the dialysis access, includes access in use, complication treatment, assess and patient survival. At the end of epidemic, we should resume access operation gradually and as soon as possible. We should take appropriate strategies to protect from virus infection during the operation. Finally, I want to thank a lot of people. Wuhan is a big city with 10 million citizens. Thanks all the people in Wuhan. They stay at home, stop moving to avoid virus spread. Furthermore, there were more than 40,000 Furthermore, there were more than 40,000 doctor and nurse from the whole nation came to Wuhan to fight against virus with us. During this people, some vascular access doctor came to Wuhan as a physician. They work in infection ward, such as Wan Ziming from Chongqing and Lu Chengxi from Zhejiang. Thank you all. Thank you for your attention.
Well, thank Dr. He for the very, very precious speech from a very severe epidemic area in China. I know that now in China, the nurses and doctors are very busy. From Professor Wang and Dr. He's talk, I think we have known, we have learned that the infection rate of the medical service providers are quite high. So, this is what we should take lesson of. We should do more protection of ourselves to maintain the robust construction of the medical service providing system. Otherwise, if the medical system being broken, then it would be a bad situation. And I've learned that the dialysis nurse staff, dialysis staff, the infection rate of COVID-19 virus was as high as like 3% to 6% according to Dr. He. I think this is we should be aware of. Here, we have to pay our highest respect to those medical staff struggling to fighting in China.
Thank you, Dr. He. You are the hero. Our third speaker is Dr. Raimin Chan, Chen Liwei Yi Shi from Japan, coming from Fukuoka General Hospital. She is going to present impact of viral outbreak on dialysis access management in Japan. Let's welcome her.
Hi, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for joining us today. I am Raimin Chan, a nephrologist from I am Raimi Chan, a nephrologist from Kami Fukoka General Hospital in Saitama, Japan. It's near Tokyo Metropolitan. First of all, I would like to thank President Ko and Secretary General Pei Pei for coming up with a great idea for hosting the conference online. The topic I would like to talk about is impact of viral outbreaks on dialysis access management in Japan today. Uh this is my declare of COI, non-conflict of interest associated with this presentation. Well, you may be surprised. We don't have any organization like the Center of Disease Control and Prevention in Japan, no CDC. That means we do not have any exact leader when coronavirus outbreaks in Japan. And the ability to test for coronavirus in Japan is clearly inferior to Korea and Taiwan. In addition, most of our capacity must be used for passengers and crews on diamond princess cruise in Yokohama, just according to media reported. Even if the Japanese government announces that it can be done more than three thousand tests a day. In fact, Japan still has only done nine hundred to one thousand tests a day. In Japan, we have more risks that untested positive patients may come for vascular access treatment. Next, the isolation beds for infected patient is not enough in Japan either, especially with negative pressure equipment. The number of beds is less than one-sixth of the population in Taiwan. There are about sixteen thousand OR in Japan. But only few of them are depressurized room. It means we are very difficult to use depressurized room for the VA treatment for the infected patient. But almost of the new OR, HEPA filter is the standard equipment even we don't have pressure control equipment. We always create or repair vascular access like the picture on the left. And the picture on the right is doing vascular access intervention therapy with CR. However, there are many specialized vascular access clinics and some local HD clinics also do VAIVT in their place in Japan. And it is not always possible to take protective measure such as HEPA filter in the operating room of these clinics. We use disposable work cap, disposable medical mask, both in the hospital and in the clinics. But in normal case, we don't drape patients completely or let them wear a mask to protect themselves and the operator. Again, in normal times, uh I think all of us, our protective is shown on the left. Like this. It is not used like the picture on the right. Well, maybe the right one is the best. Uh but I think it's not very comfortable. And uh not all of us uh have enough equipment like this. But due to coronavirus outbreaks, maybe we should consider not only use the disposable work cap and disposable lattice globes surgical mask, but also use an ninety-five medical protective mask. And protective face screen or anti-fog protective glasses, uh protective clothing uh plus surgical clothing. And uh maybe uh medical waterproof boots for medical staffs. But it is a pity, not all hospitals have protective clothing, waterproof boots, protective glasses, or even N ninety-five masks. Of course, VA clinics have less of these. About the environmental disinfection, the Japanese guidelines from JSDT are based on the same concept as spouting classification and perform disinfection before and after dialysis room and vascular access treatment. We exact do this both in the hospitals and in the clinics on a daily basis uh based on uh each category. Let me show, this is one of the designated infection hospital Tokyo Metropolitan Bokuto Hospital in Tokyo. Uh this picture is showed the isolation ward. This picture is uh the structure for patient transport. And this one is isolation uh laboratory. Uh well, I should say this is the best case in Japan. But um it is a real rare case. Well, then what can we do? Because we Japanese do not have enough facilities for infected patients, some of us have to use the equipment like the picture on the left. Like this, and uh this one is for air uh control. It is installed at the entrance of the operating room or in the private room of the ward to control the airflow. And make the space to be a simple isolation room. Of course, it is not very popular right now. But maybe we have to think uh set something like this serious. I think it's the best to be more cautious to care about cannulation, ensure dialysis hypotension, infection, and do not inhibit growth flow as possible like use tonic quips and bands. And reduce the need for treatment and avoid VA problems as much as possible. In addition, appropriate infection control procedures must be followed, as well as the risk of airborne and air source transmission during treatment. But at the same time, not every facilities have all kinds of the protection equipment. Maybe the normal protection with additional shield goggles, uh shoes covers, and maybe N ninety-five masks for steps and drip patients completely and let them wear masks will be more reasonable in Japan. This is my presentation today. Thank you for your attention. And please feel free to contact me in your convenient way. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you, Raimi. Uh it is, it was a very, very informative talk about the real condition in Japan and how you guys to adjust to this uh very, very special uh moment to deal with those AV access. I think in every country, we are now going to, we want to reduce the the unnecessary vascular access intervention or procedure. But however, uh you know, all the patients are under the indication to do treatment, then we arrange the treatment. So we try to keep it simple. And of course, in the long run, we should go back to the normal track as soon as possible. And as far I know, now, yeah, Jackie's online. Hi, Jackie.
Hello.
Yeah, how are you doing?
Very happy to see you all.
Really, really.
I I feel like I'm really seeing uh old friends and and families. And I'm really glad that uh the uh Professor Ko and also your team actually converted the DC meeting into completely electronic and and again, at that same time that we can meet each other online. And uh I'm also knowing that a lot of people are locking in through the uh WeChat, YouTube, and all the channels. So uh really, really happy and congratulations and thank you very much for the effort. And I'm very impressed by the three talks by Professor uh uh Huang, uh Professor He and also Professor Chan. And I'm really looking forward to the to the subsequent talks as well. Yeah, I I don't want to take up too much of your time, but really happy to see you all.
A special uh way of meeting each other in a special time with very special meaning, actually. The following, we will have uh talks from other part of the world also uh being suffer from the impact of coronavirus and how we doctor deal with that. And later on, Jackie, you will lead us to the very important discussion after the sessions.
Okay.
Next speaker is Dr. Zhong Qingcai from Kukata Hospital in Singapore. Please welcome his sharing.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Chi here. For those who know me, I just completed my fellowship attachment in advanced vascular access management with Dr. Ko and his team in Lingkou Changeng Memorial Hospital about three weeks ago. And now I'm back in Singapore. It's an honor for me to share this topic with you all today. I have nothing to declare. I have to admit that what we have gone through might not be representative, but most centers might share my sentiments. Since the Wuhan virus outbreak started in December last year, Singapore recorded the first confirmed case on the twenty-third of January. Two weeks later, we raised alert to Dostcon Orange as the cases are surging. And now, we have more than hundred seventy COVID nineteen cases. However, this is my pre-recorded slides. By now, it must be more than this. You can get the latest updates from our MOH website. How bizarre is the effect? Well, it sent people to panic buying. Shelves are emptied of noodles. People buying toilet papers in trolleys. Even condoms are not spared. And we have some who created their own protective gear. However, rest assured, our government have done a wonderful job in trying to contain the spread of COVID nineteen. It came up with ways to help the people. My center is not very big. We are a six hundred-bed hospital catered to patients on northern part of Singapore. Our international service does an average of seventy-five to eighty cases of angioplasties a year. We usually have an average of four to five new outpatient referrals a week. For past two months, we only seen one new outpatient referrer and did one PTA since January. Is this blessing in disguise? Probably. As we aim to reduce the risk of spreading or contracting the disease, we wanted to minimize contact with patients at large. Safety comes first. We want to protect our staffs, protect our patients, and protect ourselves. We even have patients who are very health conscious, who took the initiative to call us to postpone non-essential appointments. How are we coping? For stable patients whom we see under our surveillance clinic, we postpone their appointment, record them, we send messages to inform them. We also inform satellite dialysis center to keep monitoring their access and do not hesitate to refer to us if need early review. Patients are also empowered to monitor their own access. For those patients who need urgent review, then of course, we'll sit up urgently. This outbreak has stressed our resource limited center to the limit. As suspected cases need to be dialyzed in isolation room. We increased our hemodialysis bed capacity after approval from higher authority. Thus far, we are still managing well. In this stressful period, staffs welfare are not forgotten. We have motivation activity to cheer them up and also proper channel to go to if they are burnt out. As everyone is prepared for the worst, so do we. We all know COVID nineteen patients with comorbidities have higher mortality. And unfortunately, our YESRD patients fall into this category. So what if a YESRD patient got infected with COVID nineteen and has a dysfunctional vascular access whom required intervention? Question to the audience, are we prepared? I think the general indication for any intervention still hold. Things to consider are reducing exposure time and disinfection of the procedure room. Everyone, whether you are from a resource scarce or resourceful center, should and will have your own contingency plan. This is important as in the case study of three COVID nineteen patients treated in National Center for Infectious Diseases, Singapore, Hong Kong collected some samples from the room of the patients. And they found that virus particles are found in the toilet bowl, sink, and air exhaust outlet of one of the patient. And also, not unexpectedly, on the shoe covers of medical staff treating the patients. And I apologize for the smokering. And this reinforced on the importance of donating PPE. The last but not least, I believe what doesn't kill us will make us stronger. We have gone through SARS. Together, we will push through this COVID nineteen as well. With that, I end my sharing today. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Chi, for the talk. Actually, very good and very important. And actually, I don't know the answer of the question uh in in his talk. What if a patient got contracted the virus infection and then the access is dead and how do you do with that? Do you operate on that to revision, to do PTA or do something else? I think that leave can left in our discussion later on. And we're going to next talk.
Let's welcome Professor On Chin Liu from Malaysia Perspectives to talking about medical conference in the times of COVID nineteen.
Okay, this is uh Dr. Liu, uh speaking to you from Kuala Lumpur. Uh first of all, I would like to congratulate the Kupo Gen and the team from DC, Taiwan, for pressing on with the conference. I know it is a very difficult times now. And uh I think I share the same concern with him that this COVID virus is perhaps here to stay and the virus may actually evolve. I was so sure that I'm coming to Taiwan because I think it's a very beautiful country and I would like to support my friends. But what happened was, a hospital came up with this travel advisory on March the second, barely two weeks into the meeting, that anybody who has traveled or transited through China, including Taiwan, Macau, South Korea, Italy, Iran, Japan, France, Germany, Singapore, et cetera, must declare that they have traveled through these countries and then they have to go and self-quarantine and not return to work for a minimum of fourteen days. I think this is a very surprising and it's a last-minute thing and make things very difficult. And I've been thinking that I should just press on with my journey to come to Taiwan. However, there are a lot of uh legal and ethical issues. Because if I travel and I return to work, I probably need to declare to my patients that I've been to these countries. So I think it's difficult. So I'm sorry I could not make it, but nevertheless, deep in my heart, I still support this meeting. I think COVID virus is here to stay. I think it is a nature, a way nature fights back because this globe perhaps cannot support seven billion population. I think we have been abusing nature and then now I think nature is fighting back. And I do believe the virus epidemic will go on with to come a pandemic. And maybe in years to come, this virus will evolve and become more deadly and more contagious. So nevertheless, I think conferences will change. We no longer meet in a big hall like this where we bring faculties from all over the world, participants from all over the world. And in times to come, perhaps teleconferencing like this will be the meeting of choice. And perhaps this is an opportunity for us because we may perhaps now bring in, you know, established or famous faculties from all over. established or famous faculties from all over the world. They can spend time for two to three hours just at a conference online. Or and then they can actually share with us their knowledge. This is also perhaps a good time where now conferences will change, whereby participants will come from all over the world, whether they are from Pakistan, from India, from Sudan, from Sri Lanka, or through any part of the world. I think things have changed. So I must congratulate Copo Jin for taking on the challenge instead of postponing the conference indefinitely, instead of fighting, facing the uncertainty that we all know COVID is a lesson in human nature coexistence. Global travel medical conferences might change from this year, twenty twenty. Maybe online conference will attract more participants, maybe more efficient, more cost effective, and perhaps an educational model for all of us. And I think D C Taiwan has not been a setback. It is setting a new global standard. So I congratulate Copo Jin and team again that they will press on with D C conference and hope everybody all over the world will enjoy this conference. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you, N C Liu, and for your great support from your country for support for Taiwan's D C twenty twenty. Of course, none of us want this. We don't want viral infection, but however it come and we have to prepare for that. And from your talk, we have learned that not only in Taiwan, but also in other country, the medical service providers are so great. We are all under the same condition that for somehow our human rights are restricted because of we are doing very important things to give us, give the population healthcare. This is very important thing. So at this special time, lots of us are restricted to go abroad, no matter for your work or for your leisure. So actually, a lot of doctors and nurses, we are sacrificing ourselves. We work in a relatively risk condition and we sacrifice lots of our time during this specific moment. So let's get together and do everything can do to provide the best care for the population worldwide. And yeah, the next speak will be very, very important for a very, very important person.
Last but not least, please welcome Professor Jackie Ho, the Director of D C, to bring us impact of viral outbreak on dialysis access management, Singapore contacts, and the discussion of this special session.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm presenting this on behalf of my division, Lilian from Tao Dialysis Center and Winkin, my colleague consultant nephrologist in N U H S. Starting from late January this year, Singapore has put national health alert level to yellow facing the COVID nineteen outbreak. The main strategies at that time were travel history and contact tracing, extensive leave of absence for those with positive history, self-quarantine, and preparing for further escalation. On seventh of Feb, the National Disease Outbreak Response System Condition called DOSCON has been escalated to orange level because of the rising number of diagnosed cases. Relating to dialysis access management, these are the parties that were heavily involved. The Ministry of Health plays a strong role to provide guidelines to both hospital as well as community healthcare providers. Furthermore, it is not just a single directional communication. M O H provides hotline and telecommunication route for frontline healthcare workers to ask questions, raise requests, and make discussion. In the community, individual center or dialysis organization based on the guideline set up their own protocol to protect both patients and staff. In Tao Dialysis Center, they put huge effort to educate the patients and every staff, what is the situation, how they can protect themselves, why there are new measures. Patient and staff are encouraged to ask questions relating to their dialysis arrangements and also issues of their daily living during the viral outbreak. The Dialysis Center also keep constant communication with M O H. For example, they will feedback on the need of mask for all the staff so that M O H could supply the amount necessary for each shift of dialysis. In the hospital, most of the less urgent services have to be stopped. Some nephrologists has been deployed to pandemic wards. There is also a major M O H policy to segregate the clinical team into at least two teams. So in case some of the healthcare professionals down with the infection, the most essential services will still be able to maintain. Another major policy to control infectious disease outbreak at the national level is having a National Center of Infectious Disease. So far, it works quite well as Singapore is a small country. This center was up two years ago and is located in a rather central area of the country. Staff over there are very well trained for infectious disease control. The wards are all isolation rooms with negative pressure. It is well supported with various specialists and researchers. The center is also well backed up by advanced technology, including self-contained lockdown system, staff and patient movement tracking system. Most of the COVID nineteen diagnosed patients are being transferred and centralized into N C I D so as to reduce the stress on surface of the other hospital in the country. In the community dialysis center, taking Tao as example, dialysis nurses and patients are now fixed to assign the shift, just like a team. This will facilitate contact tracing if necessary, also reducing chance of cross-infection. Unidirectional flow of patient and checkpoint over the entrance of dialysis center are the most basic arrangements. Foral cleaning of the whole dialysis center will be conducted after each shift of dialysis. The community dialysis center will not be able to cater patients with fever and upper respiratory tract symptoms. Those patients will be referred to emergency department. Close contact of confirmed cases again has to be referred to the hospital. Whereas close contacts of quarantine individuals will be arranged to have dialysis in the center over the last shift of the day. Circlical mask will also be provided to those patients and their seat will be at least one meter away from the others. Staff working with this patient will put up full P P E as well. For the nephrology team, some of the team members are deployed to pandemic ward to help out. The rest of the team divided into six. Five teams for inpatient and one for outpatient. Once assigned it, they will maintain their position until the orange level step down. One of the inpatient teams is assigned to manage COVID nineteen confirmed that patient requiring hemodialysis in isolation room. The nephrologists do expect slowdown of preemptive hemodialysis access planning. And they are also seeing slightly higher number of acute blockage of access during doscon orange period. For vascular surgery division, hospital has stopped all non-urgent elective procedures in the main operating theater. This is to minimize the traffic in the hospital and divert some nursing resources to the pandemic ward. The vascular surgery division has segregated into two teams, one clinical and another one non-clinical, and switch every two weeks. Most of the preemptive dialysis access has to be postponed. Less urgent fistula plasty or surgical revision procedure also need to be pushed back. But we can still perform this semi-urgent or urgent once. We can also perform endovascular intervention for critically diseased access in the cath lab. Over the clinic side, we also try to cut down the number of patient attending to clinic. On the other hand, we try to maintain the monitoring of patient's dialysis access by asking them to report the self-assessment result and obtain the dialysis parameter chart via emails. This might give us some idea how we can monitor the dialysis access remotely. Urgent salvage of from both access still maintained. Even though there is also team segregation policy over the intervention radiology side, they are extending lots of help to us to treat critically diseased access and salvage from both dialysis access as well. It has been five weeks since the doscon orange is up. M O H Hospital as well as community healthcare institutions all are looking cautiously over how the next step of service arrangement we should adopt as the pandemic unlikely to disappear in a short period of time. Nevertheless, let's keep confidence and positive mindset. We will go through the pandemic. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie Ho, for your very, very precious experience, real experience in Singapore dealing with the virus epidemic. What do we vascular surgeons to, how do we cope with the disease? Now, later on, we are going to get into our discussion session. And I believe that our discussions are on air now, online now. Hi, hello, everybody. No, you are online.
Very great response.
Okay, this is very, very first time, my very first time doing this kind of online conference.
I I think the main person have to switch off all other people first.
Yes, of course.
Mic off and then when, when before you like to give your comment or question, raise your hand and then Doctor Copo Jin will address your name and then your mic will be released.
In order to reduce the noise. Okay. And so I got some online question from our online audience. The first, it seems that elective procedure have been stopped in a lot of areas. So when we resume the procedures, some said the percutaneous translateral angioplasty P T A procedure should be resumed first. I don't know what's the opinions of you guys in different countries. So anybody have the idea about which procedure to resume first other than others?
Can I, can I ask is the China Professor He and Professor Wong still online? Or they are not online?
They are not online, I believe that. Actually, I would tell you that in Taiwan, we stopped, actually, we stopped all the elective procedure for some days. Then now we resume resumed the elective procedure, start P T A first. But still, we are quite reluctant to do the elective creation of shunt in my hospital. I'm staying in Lingkou Changang Hospital, very big medical center. I don't know, I wonder if it's also the same in Singapore.
Well, I, we do continue some of the fistula plasty for really very diseased fistula when we detect the flow is very weak or is the outflow is very high grade stenosis or central vein conditions. For fistula creation, definitely, we are trying to postpone because after the fistula creation, we do expect to monitor them very closely, maybe every two weeks to every four weeks. So that means the patient still have to come back to the hospital very frequently. So that's why we think that unless it's really pressing. For example, the patient is having a lot of problem, a lot of tunnel catheter infection. Then for those patient, we have to proceed. And in some patient, we are actually creating a secondary fistula for those who have blocked the primary one, then we are also can actually avoid a tunnel catheter. Yeah.
Yeah. And how about another country with least tense situation?
Maybe how about in Japan? Professor Chen?
Still doing P T A and creation?
Well, I think in Japan, just as you know, in a normal situation, we are create A V F for more than ninety percent. And not only in the hospital, but also in the clinic. And we a clinic and maybe normal surgeon clinic. And of course, due to this outbreak, I think we have to do more protection to protect ourselves. But Japanese facilities, in fact, we are not start do something protection for the COVID nineteen.
So still you are doing the daily work for creation.
Yeah, yeah, in Japan, all almost of the facilities are still do the the same, same, same way. Yeah.
That's pretty different from Singapore.
Oh, yeah, yeah. So I think because the, you know, the increase of the positive patient is not very fast. So well, Japanese people are panicked, are already panicked. But because our hospital is well too too small and well, to separate. So we all, we have only small, many, many small hospitals. So all of them are not doing the same the same thing. And we do not have a C D C or something society like T S and Thai Power Society of Nephrology to tell some, to tell us how can we do.
Yeah. So it seems that in Japan, for somehow panic makes protection. So the increasing of virus construction seems the slope is slowing down. That's very good. And how about in other country in Malaysia? Do you, N C Liu? What's the situation in Malaysia about your daily work? Do you stop elective surgery just as in Singapore?
No, so far, I think the Malaysia, we have hundred over cases. We are still not under siege. You know, in the ways bad, we are taking things quite lightly. And so most of us are resuming the usual work. But as of today, I, we have a patient on renal failure on dialysis who has contracted COVID. And so I think that really is a test of our system now. In Malaysia, COVID positive, you you get sent to In Malaysia, if you are COVID positive, you get sent to infectious disease hospital. But I think we have to think now what to do because the, if your patients were infected or potentially infected, we probably have to rethink on how we want to manage these patients. So right now, everything is as usual, you know, so I'm not sure what's going to happen, but our, our nephrology group is in the national task force, is trying to think of coming up with some guidelines on what to do with these patients. And once they have determined what they should do with these patients, then I think the vascular access group will have to think of how to prioritize their, their work.
Yeah, so it seems that you're doing the normal work. That's, that is very good. Yeah, as I know, in Malaysia now, it's only probably 150 cases of infection of virus. It seems not so bad. So I think it may be effective. But however, in our country, I think we take everybody as likely to be infected. So for a lot of hospital, a lot of department, the elective procedure are stopped now. Oh, from online, there is another question about how to protect the medical staff and the other patients in the hospital. Do those patient they send to hospital for operation or admission for treatment, is it a routine? Do a CT scan for every patient? There's a question from, I think from China, they think that somebody says that any patient is under the risk of any kind of virus infection, then do a CT scan to differentiate. Do you think?
Oh, I see Lu Mingxi is online as well.
Oh, he's online.
Yeah, yeah, so he is supporting the Wuhan area, he is volunteer to be deploy over there. So he is also in the epic center. Maybe we should also listen to his experience.
Yep. So Dr. Liu? So I think Dr. Liu is online. Lu Mingxi可以让他上线
Mingxi你上线吗
He's offline again, so.
Before that, I also see Dr. Ingmar Davidson.
Yeah, yeah.
Online and welcome you both. Very happy to have the expert from US as well as Europe joining us.
So maybe Ingmar can give us some opinion about how to prevent the viral spreading in our vascular access department. Yeah, Ingmar, how are you?
Yes, hey.
Hey, nice to see you.
I want to, I want you to know it's 2 o'clock AM in Dallas.
Great support, great support.
Thank you. So give us some of your opinion on how to spread, prevent the spreading of the virus during your, our daily practice.
You may have heard that Mr. Trump, who is our president, he, he gave a talk last night from the Oval Office, and all travel from Europe to US stops at midnight Friday, which is Friday at your place, it's Friday here now too. But he excluded UK, so you can, we can travel to UK. I find that kind of interesting. The, obviously, the spread in Europe, and Trump actually blames Europe for the, for the cases we have in the US. He says they come from Europe. Who knows? But anyway, so we don't have a lot of cases reported. It's mainly in Seattle, San Francisco area, and from, from the cruise ships. And, and some of the cruise ships people have ended up in quarantine in San Antonio in Texas. Yesterday, we got the first case in Dallas where I live. They come from Europe. Who knows? So it's, it's very low number wise, but everybody thinks that's because we are not testing as much as you are. There are most likely a lot more cases out there, but we don't know yet. The story is that most hospitals do not do elective surgery in the US, more to protect people than perhaps overloaded. If you look at what is being done, it's mainly hand washing and social distancing. It's funny, when you walk, even where I live, I live close to a area in Dallas called Highland Park, where they, for a better word, the rich people live, not me, but others. So they walk along, even there, we'll walk away from each other. We don't get even close outside. So the social distance is a big deal in the US and hand washing. We don't know. I think it's going to take off semi-crazy. It's going to be way more here in a few days.
Yep.
Thank you. Po, is Yeh Jialing also over Zoom? Maybe we can ask him in Shanghai, how is his center and whether they, they consider how to manage the, the cases lineup now?
Of course, Dr. Xie. Yeh, Yeh Jialing. Hello?
In Shanghai, how is his center and whether they, they consider how to manage the, the cases lineup now?
Of course, Dr. Xie.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Professor He?
I seem to have a little bit delay. Yeh, Yeh Jialing.
Okay, okay, I think you can hear me. Okay, yes, this is Jialing here from Shanghai.
Shanghai, how is his center and whether they, they consider how to manage the, the cases lineup now?
Of course. Okay, so we are the vascular surgery?
Yes.
Yeah, 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 I can hear you. Yeah, we are the vascular surgery, so we do, regularly, we do some access cases.
Yes, this is Jialing.
But during, during, let me turn off the, the sound of the TV here, sorry. During February, actually, Shanghai, yes, is in a very severe situation, so according to the regulation from the government and also from the hospital, the only emergency cases can be admitted to the hospital. We cannot admit any elective surgery patients. So what we did during that time for the access patients are all the emergency cases. For me, I actually performed about 10 or 15 like that PTA. All these cases are the occluded cases. And also, one case, we need to create a new fistula, so we choose the, the early cannulation device, the, the AccuSeal graft for that patient, that the patient can receive the dialysis right after the procedure. So that's the situation during the February. But from this month, the situation become better, so we can admit all the.
Yeah, so, so it seems.
The elective patients.
You tried to reduce, reduce the elective one and do the emergent one, and now it's very normal.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's good.
Yeah, we tried to reduce all the labor burden of the hospital, you know. We still have more than 115 physicians already go to Wuhan.
All right.
So we shot of the physicians and shot of the nurses, and we, we needed to admit one patient in one ward. We cannot, this is a four bad wards, but we can only admit one patient in one room. So, so, so the, the hospital ask us to can only admit the emergency case.
Very, very good experience to us. So now the time is up, and we have to close the session. And of course, we have a lot of good content to come in later on, so thank you, everybody. Yep, Jackie, any?
Po, can I request for extension of this another five minutes?
Oh, I.
I think everybody is very eager to, to have some more discussion. And I just saw Professor Miyata raise his hand.
Oh, really? Okay.
Can we maybe just have?
Sure.
Maybe just five minutes?
Five minutes, yep.
Akira Miyata, and I'm working for, for Japan's Red Cross Kumamoto Hospital in the south of Japan. And I'm basically a vascular surgeon, and I'm just the colleague of Dr. Remy. And I, I'd like to add some, some more comments about the Japanese situation. Because we have a kind of network that we, with among clinics, which is performing vascular, vascular access surgery or PTAs. And the next, next Monday, those network and association pronounced, announced that we will have a, a kind of a web meeting about how to deal with the COVID-19 patient. But basically, and here in Japan, as Dr. Remy said, we don't have no CDC, and, and that could be a big problem, but, and on the other hand, we have some focal hospital, which is nominated to take care of infectious disease like this COVID-19 or, or SARS or so on, so on. And those hospitals are located in each area of the, each prefecture, so that they have not big number, but a small number of the beds specially prepared for this kind of infectious disease. I can say, just like Dr. Remy said, we Japanese are not so good prepare for this kind of situation. And we are going to now think about this. But those patient who are supposed to be infected by the COVID-19 will, should be or will be transferred to those hospital, focal, focal hospital, which is take care of those infected diseases. Thank you.
Thank you, Miyata.
Yes.
Okay, Jackie Ho, do you have anything to say to our audience or faculty?
MC has raised his hand.
Okay.
MC.
MC Liu?
Can you hear me?
It's yours, micro is yours.
Yes, thank you. I had a discussion with the nephrologists, and I think more important than concentrating on vascular access, we should really concentrate on our dialysis patient as a whole. And I think it's really important that there are three steps that we need to take. Number one, I think the patients has to be responsible for themselves. They have to practice a social distancing, not only them, their carers, so that they are not easily infected by this COVID. For instance, they should avoid, you know, public gathering, they should avoid travel, etc. Second important thing is, I think the healthcare workers like us and the dialysis nurse, I think they should take it very seriously. This is a desperate time, call for desperate measures. They should forego all the travel, they should practice social distancing and all those hand hygiene, etc., when they manage this patient. And more importantly, I think dialysis unit should be made into a fortress. Because once you have a case that comes to your dialysis unit, you find that then that becomes a big issue, the whole dialysis unit need to be closed. And because of that, my nephrologist told me that they have to practice some means of making a fortress of this dialysis unit. And when you have a case that's under suspicion, or any patient under suspicion, then these cases unfortunately will have to sent to a different dialysis unit, where all these COVID patients are kept. I think these are three very important messages, which I think we'll practice this and introduce the dialysis centers all over Malaysia. This is my message, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. That is very important because from Dr. His, from China, this, the talk had mentioned that around 10% of the dialysis patient are under suspected infection. Around 3 to 6% of medical staff are being infected. So it is very important to keep ourselves healthy. Any comment from all of us?
Yeah, I, I totally agree, and I think we are doing very responsible things here. We have a very healthy social distancing.
Yep.
Right now. I, I just want to hope, maybe, I mean, in the, in the subsequent meeting, if we have time and we can allow more discussion is to think about, I, I think it's how the dialysis center and the hospital and maybe the dialysis treatment hospital or center to have it, after this pandemic event, to have some plans to, what if another pandemic or other kind of infectious disease come in? How would you be able to convert from a usual practice to a prevent infectious control system? And then secondly, I think it's also a time of challenge that we can't see our patients so frequently. So dialysis access monitoring using a remote system is actually, I think, very important. And in the long term, that we can develop something to allow us to monitor them with the least amount of hospital or clinic attention, that will be even better. So telemedicine or remote monitoring, I, I think this is something that we need to look into and prepare for the future.
Yeah, I think, I think we will do better and better again and again. Be well-prepared for anything bad, yes. Now, I think the time is really up, and we're going to take a short break, 10 minutes break, and back to the next session. And of course, for our Daisy faculties, if you want to contribute anything to our online audience, don't walk away, stay online, and always you can make some comment or questions. So thank you all, our faculty speakers and our audience, thank you. This session is closed. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us with coronavirus session.